Yes, and then I'll give you the preview when they sit down. This is the presentation on Michigan test for teacher certification three year cumulative report. Typically, we've just put this in your information folder. We've expanded it today, you'll see, for a number of reasons, to try to give a little more insight into what we can possibly do, but also just report the facts as we've done historically. It's a basic skills test. Content tests are required at the end before certification, but the basic skills is for entry. The content tests are developed using K-12 state content standards and standards for teacher preparation, and tests are aligned with national professional specialized association standards. Sally, if you'd introduce the team and take over.
So with me at the table is John Van Wagner. John is the interim assistant director for the professional preparation office, and Steve Stegnek, who is the higher education consultant in that office. And this is a report that many of you have seen before, so this gives you the cumulative report for 2008 and 2011. And this gives you both the individual teacher prep institution as well as the aggregate, and the comparisons among those years. So I'm going to turn it over to John.
Okay. First of all, to start, I want to make sure to thank our staff, especially Dana Utterback in our office, our support staff that has put a lot of hours into crunching the numbers and working with Steve. So their help has been unbelievably useful. But I want to make sure, before we start off, to let you know that out of this report, one of the things over the last couple of months we've been looking to do is actually going to visit these institutions that are having some of the issues with some lower scores. Steve and I are actually sitting down with the institutions, with their deans, directors, some of their staff, and to talk about what things they're doing to put in place measures to improve these scores, and to really work at making sure that their students are prepared. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to Steve, and he'll go ahead and talk about it from there.
One of the things that this leads to later this year is the teacher performance scores. And this three-year aggregate makes a very large part of that score. So usually, the board reviews and observes and makes comments during August when we receive these reports. And we give you this information now to kind of give you a heads up as to what will be happening later in August because of the importance and the public observation that occurs when we do publish and discuss these teacher preparation institution performance As Sally mentioned, there's quite a bit of information in this report. There is three years from the September 2008 through August 2011 for teacher preparation institutions themselves in the aggregate. In other words, their total passing percentage of all their particular tests. There are a couple of different ways to look at it. In the tables, there are information about the initial event, whether, what happens the first time somebody takes a test? Do they pass it? That shows up in the initial column, and then you get a percentage for that. Then there is also the cumulative column, or what is also known as a best attempt column. So over the three-year period, an individual might take the test multiple times if they didn't pass it the first time. So the cumulative report then is, you know, kind of the best attempt of a candidate, and it is really that cumulative attempt that goes into the TPI performance score piece. So later in August, we'll be looking at those cumulative pieces. In addition to the information about the schools, the teacher preparation institutions themselves, there are then the various 70 or so different test fields that we have as part of the content, and that is there for your information as well. Later in the report, we actually do then some, I guess longitudinal comparison between the performance over the various periods of time. So beginning in page 56 of the report, we look at a comparison of three-year periods over three times, okay? So you'll see 2008 to 11, you'll see 2007-10, you'll see 2006-9, where we then try to give some sense of what's happening across the state as time goes on, at both the level of the teacher preparation institutions, as well as the level of the various tests. On page 56, you'll notice one thing, or maybe you have already, in terms of the statewide aggregate performances. We've gradually moved from 91% statewide for all tests being passed to 89% to now 88%. That decrease that you're seeing there is due to the impact of an action that was taken in 2008 where the various cut scores of the tests were increased. So we're starting to see now the full impact of that action in 2008. During '06-9, we had the first kind of impact. '07-10, we had a second impact. Now we have the full three-year impact of that adjustment of raising of the cut scores back in October 2008. Another thing that you probably should note as you look at the report is we only report obvious results or visible results where there are at least 10 or more test takers or events. So you'll see throughout the forms that there are asterisks in various places because that represents a case where there was less than 10 test takers taking the test as a group. And so we simply don't include those for statistical reasons, that it's difficult to make a lot of conclusions based upon those kind of small numbers, plus the fact that there's a possibility that someone could go back into the record and get some individual contact if there's one, two, three, or four individuals. So to protect some of the names of the test takers, we don't provide that information when there's less than 10 individuals. However, in all cases, all of the performances are totaled into the aggregate. The one place where there's an exception to that is Kalamazoo College, where you're likely to see three test takers in the period of 2008 and 11 because they're phasing out their teacher preparation program. So that's what you're seeing there, is that these are some of the last individuals that are taking the tests that still, you know, have identified themselves as being eligible to be recommended, or at least aligned with Kalamazoo College. I think with that, I'll take questions or comments that you might have.
Mike?
Dan, and Eileen.
This is wonderful information. Appreciate it. This wonderful information, thank you for sharing it with us. One question is, so when I look at the kind of three years of three-year rolling averages, there are some schools that show a noticeable jump, a noticeable improvement in scores, say Mary Grove College, which improved 16 percentage points over three years. And then there are some that show a significant decline, maybe one in particular, I guess. One big jump, one big decline. Rochester College fell 17 points over those same three years. Any kind of lessons to be learned, or what's, is there anything kind of within your purview? It may just be all internal stuff there that you're not aware of, but anything within your purview that kind of you can deduce from that information around what's going right at Mary Grove, what's going wrong at Rochester that you can share?
I think if you look at Mary Grove over that period of time on page 56 there, what you'll notice is that their number of test takers has also been decreasing. You know, I think it went from 114 to 66 to 43. Mary Grove is one of the institutions that some years ago went into at-risk and low-performing status because of what was happening in '06-9, '07-10. One of the things that they began to observe structurally is that they did not have a very good control on who was taking the tests. Individuals were going in, taking the tests without any real preparation, without the knowledge of the institution. So as part of their corrective action, they became very attuned to preparing their students appropriately, and making sure that they were using what's known as the validity period and the eligibility process that's in place to make sure those candidates were actually prepared for testing. And because they had begun to do a better job of that and prepare their candidates, they've begun to increase their performance on the MTTC. And as a result, last year, they moved out of their low-performing, at-risk status into the satisfactory status, that's part of our categories. An institution that you've noted before, who's been going down, they need to be aware of that themselves and figure out what's happening. I can't give you a specific reason for why Rochester is decreasing, but that is something that we have to be attuned to in our office because an institution like Rochester is currently in a probationary status for going to final approval. So as John mentioned, I'm sure that he and I will be following up with them as part of our list of technical assistance to teacher preparation institutions, to give them the heads up on, you know, this has become obvious now. What is your plan of action to respond to these things?
Eileen was next, then Nancy, then Kath, then John, Cassandra.
On the surface of it.
And Mary Ann.
On the surface of this report, I have two comments. As somebody who's been watching this for a long time with a visceral interest in it, I want to point out that our policy of not reporting test takers for programs, so 10 and under, is allowing, I've just gone through the H's, and we have two teacher prep institutions who have more than half of their test takers not reported. The range for all of them is 10% to 50, more than 50%. And I think that as we look at teacher prep, we have to say, does that serve what we want to do? Does that, does this report, is it coming to us in a way that a third of the candidates aren't reported for their scores? That concerns me. It's not, I understand the policy, and I think the transparency that we're now showing for K-12 leads to a different discussion on how candidates may be treated in these programs, because in so many of them, there's just a tiny little segment of people who are going to that particular university. And it may be that that's not the best preparation. We can't tell from this. It may be that that institution is not going to offer them the best preparation, they're going to a different university or a different college with a larger group of students where they will be reported out, where the preparation may be more comprehensive. I can't tell that. Because I can't, it leads me to examine these colleges in a way that I wouldn't if the data were being reported, okay? So that's a big concern of mine. The other one is a whole discussion that I think needs to be put forward on STEM, because when you look at earth sciences, I can't tell from the data, this is a, you know, a very surface report for a huge amount of data. But when you look at earth sciences, for example, most of the pass rates for the first taking are in the 40s or 50s, and it doesn't get much better for the cumulative pass rate. I can't tell whether, because it's consistent from 2007 on, I can't tell whether the test has gotten harder, but the rigor of the programs has gotten harder at the same time, or whether the grade point averages of kids going into that program don't show good preparation in science basics, you know, or whether, I just can't tell. So since STEM is so important to us as a state, it's a little frightening, and it's not much better for elementary science, although it was better. And I, and the third point, sorry, I said only two, but the third one is language. I'm frightened when I look at the few teachers who are being prepared in a wide range of languages. And I recognize that that's probably a district hiring issue, although it may not be. It may reflect faculty and institutions who are tenured, or, you know, initiatives that the departments did in previous years. But we're not getting a wide range of anything that is a business language for the years coming up being taught. We had, I think, 24 Chinese-speaking teachers graduated, and I don't know what connection we can make between hiring opportunities. I don't know whether we have districts. I had a letter recently, John, you might have had the same one, from a teacher at Pioneer or Huron, who said, what is this? You know, there's nothing being taught with Spanish. So I'm very concerned about that, because world languages were a huge part of our discussions when we adopted the high school curriculum. And I don't see that happening here. I don't know where we're getting those teachers, so, thanks.
Thanks, Eileen. Nancy? We're going to try to get some other mics. It's worse today. Not microphone.
I'll just go to my playground.
Although maybe.
I'm going to follow along with what Eileen just talked about, and it reminds me of the conversation we had just last month, I believe it was, with our assessment department about how they were changing the way they were looking at assessment with districts, small districts especially, who didn't have significant a number, enough number of students in a subgroup to even report those, whether or not they were making the grade or not. I believe we have the same situation here. And I believe that we have teachers, or potential teachers, or young people who are in teacher preparation institutions following through the cracks because the statistically significant number has not been reached. That doesn't mean that the reality isn't what it is. And I think we need to address it in the same way, or a similar way, as we have with our student assessment data. If for no other reason than for the sake of those young people who have been taking those classes. You've heard me long and often, and will continue to hear me long and often, talk about how I believe it is unconscionable to allow a young person to go through teacher preparation institutions, and their parents largely, and themselves, to take out loans to pay for this, only to find out when they get out that they have not been well enough trained to go into the classroom and compete successfully and help our young people, their teaching, be successful. And in my mind, we could have done more about it. I'm not saying we could have solved it immediately, but we could have done more. So that concerns me very much. I also look to, Dan talked about Rochester, I look to Finlandia. He was before us, just not even six months ago, I don't believe.
It's within the last year.
It's certainly within the last year. And just as they have stopped having everybody taking the test, my guess is, significantly, not insignificantly, but significantly, their teacher percentage passage rate has dropped, not increased. And they swore to us that if they were just given a chance, they would have the ability to rise their program up to the level that needed to be, and it looks to me like they have done anything but. And that may be harsh, but I think it's important when talking about all of these teacher preparation institutions we have, and again, unconscionable to students and parents if we do not point these things out and take opportunity when given these reports, to do something about it. So I don't expect you guys to work miracles, but I do want to have that out there for all to see, to say, we are watching, we are looking, we are holding you accountable, and if you're not, you will hear from us. And I'll get off my soapbox, though.
When the board's done, I'm going to, take your time, by the way, but when you're done, I'm going to mention what next steps and some of what we've been planning, but let's follow this.
Are you having a hard time hearing, Mike?
When you're done, and take your time being done, but I'm going to tell you what some of our next steps are, what we've been meeting on, and I think might help tie the, some of this together that you're discussing. Steve, you might want to comment on that one now, if you're fine.
I'm just going to comment on two things. The one thing Eileen raised with respect to the small numbers, I clearly concede that, you know, it's a 1, we don't put 100%, or 1, we don't put 0, or something like that. But if it's a 1 in the column, it does get added into the full aggregate for the institution. So I just want to make sure you understand that. They're not being overlooked in the final aggregate count, but I will concede the point that you don't see it as a single line, but they do show up at the end. And certainly, the institutions have that information available to them, and our office does too. So we do kind of use that information to counsel the institutions about, you know, persistent, consistent lowness that we might see in those even small numbers. The other comment, too, is, yes, we've made that point to Finlandia frequently over the last few months, and they are seriously considering the status of their program at this very time, because they recognize the difference between the assertions made and the appearance of what we've had over the past six months.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kath, you were next, and then John.
This is fascinating report, there's so much information in it. But one of the things I looked at was the number of students in the sciences and in math, and instead of increasing, there seemed to be going down from 2006-9 to 2008-11, which is distressing. I don't know how we reverse that, but I mean, I thought we were trying to encourage colleges...
We're going to pass this around for a while, to see if this helps.
Oh, thank you. Oh, that's right, I was ignoring this, I'm sorry. I can't look both ways at the same.
I'm more guilty than you are, so.
Anyway, I'm glad to hear that, because I was having a hard time hearing you.
You can do a little Whitney Houston tribute while you got the...
No, I was saying this, Mike, I didn't know if you heard me. I was looking at the numbers of students who were majoring in the sciences, and the numbers seem to be going down instead of up. And I thought we would try to encourage TPIs to persuade more students.
Is that on, Kath?
To persuade more students to be, to be, can you...
Is it on?
Yeah. It's on. Yeah. It's on, okay.
A little bit of this, just so you know, is balancing it between getting out to the world and the work they have to do back here, and making it loud enough for in here. It's more complicated than it seems, actually, so I don't want our guys to fret that they're not doing their best.
Okay.
There's a lot open to the state board.
Okay, well, at any rate.
There you go.
What are we doing, or what can we do to encourage more students to be in the sciences and math, if we're really talking about STEM stuff? The other thing is, are some of these colleges becoming more selective in their admissions policies to begin with, rather than just adjusting the numbers of who takes the test and do they really prepare for it?
And the visits that we've had with these folks, that is one of the things that they've all expressed, that they are, in fact, looking at their GPA, their ACT, career in college ready, entrance, those kind of things. But, you know, again, they have some autonomy there, and so we're trying to have that discussion with all of them to ensure that they're looking at the quality of the candidates that they met.
For some reason, that mic really worked well. I don't know what's happening here. I think John was next, then Cassandra, then...
Which is one of the intents, really, of this kind of effort, to shine a light on how are, how well are teachers prepared? You know, I'm always interested in what does this kind of transparent performance reporting do as part of getting better teachers in the classroom? And when we first initiated this several years ago, these reports, plus the overall teacher preparation institution sort of performance report, I mean, the main goal was to shine, you know, light of day on how well these institutions were preparing teachers, because that could provide a strong institutional incentive for them to do better, and maybe do what Mary Grove is doing, to pay more attention and provide more support to ensuring that their teachers are well-prepared, pass the test, but are going to be good teachers. So I think, Kath, you know, you're going to see this effect of schools perhaps being more discriminating, and not just letting anybody and everybody become a teacher, and we need them in math and science, but to be more attentive to, are you going to be an effective teacher? I think, given these scores, though, it's important to note, if we've changed the cut scores, just as we have with K-12 student learning, that that progression upward, you know, is going, has been perhaps interrupted, and we just need to continue to factor that in. And are we going to keep the cut scores in place for a little while? There's one question, just to...
Well, let me, you know, since it's, I was going to say, it's good to do it while it's relevant, you brought it up.
Can I just hold that question? But then, my main other question was, you know, as we look ahead, too, are we also considering, you know, there's an encouragement in the field that maybe we want more institutions to use this test as a screen for applicants, to say, are you going to be potentially a teacher? And, you know, is there a way to allow institutions to use this test as an admissions or an entrance screen to discourage people who are unlikely to be good teachers, but to hold them harmless for that test score, I guess, so that they're not counted against their rolling averages, was another thought I had about how we were approaching the use of this test. So we are seeing people discriminate more about not letting in anybody and everybody as we need great teachers.
Just wait till the end, the original plan, if that's okay. I think it was Cassandra, and then Mary Ann, and then Nancy.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Mary Grove College for what they did. If you remember, David Feike, the president of Mary Grove, was here a couple of years ago with members of his staff, and they were very concerned about the three-year average, because at that time, they said, you know, we're making significant changes, and this makes it look like we're not really doing that. But three years later, you can clearly see the changes that they've made have had a huge impact, and, you know, they were, they should be commended for what they've been able to do. And increasing their percentages, even in the face of increased cut scores, I think is commendable, and so I just want to take a moment to congratulate them.
Thank you. Mary Ann, you're on. Suddenly, this is working more. I don't know, it's magic somehow.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
My concern is, how often are we just updated, or at least revised?
Mary Ann, that's, if you can be patient on that one, that's part of what I'm going to say at the very end, and I'll just, I'm trying to accumulate some of the questions. That's one we have some plans on, and I'll speak to at the end, okay?
Okay, I just wanted to add, last month, when we talked about the candidates for librarians, it seemed to my attention that the TCC says the librarians had not been revised since 1996. I found quite alarming, given all the advances and technology that were at that time, so just a little concerning.
Good, thank you. I think it was Nancy?
Let's see if we need this, I think. This is an anecdotal piece of information. The place where I work is a city building, and so there are lots of different offices that are in there. I met a young woman last week who was an intern from Central Michigan University, who was now in a totally different field than she started out in. She started out in teacher preparation at Central, and when, after going through her counseling and academic goal setting, she found out that they had placed her in her major area in math, and her minor in science, and she wanted to be in language arts and history, and was told that she didn't have that option. She dropped out and went to another program. So I think people are trying to get people in to the STEM programs. I'm not sure that that's the best method to do it, but I guess what I would say is that as we make that attempt to make more information available to kids to get them into STEM, we want to make sure that there are kids that want to be there. And that, to me, is a challenge. So I'll just leave that at that for the anecdotal piece that I got last week.
Any other comments before I kind of clean up here? Just a few thoughts about, you know, hearing the board and past meetings, hearing the board and, is that better?
It was fine.
Hearing the board and past meetings, is this okay?
Yep, great.
And then more today. We spent probably at least an hour each of the last three Fridays at SUSE Group, trying to think more about this. So the test, for example, one of the things, just by its own nature, the basic skills is almost an insulting name. You know, we don't want teachers who are aspiring to the profession to be thinking about themselves as meeting basic skills, and by the way, these are very basic skills. I mean, it's almost embarrassing, and we hear that from the field. So one of the things we've been thinking about is trying to, first of all, say, you're automatically in if you hit a certain mark on the ACT, which at least every, that would accommodate everyone in the state, wouldn't admittedly necessarily account for others who maybe came from, let's say, the East Coast where they don't take it, but there's another avenue for that. And we thought the bar might be 24, for example, and the reason that 24 would make some sense is it's the 80 percentile. It puts us more in line with Finland and Singapore. It puts us more in line with Finland and Singapore and all these folks that are, you know, supposedly outshining us in so many ways, which we could, you know, get defensive about, or I occasionally get defensive about. But, but I think part of it is, we've already got a supply and demand issue that's in, as Kathy said and Nancy said, it's kind of in the wrong area. We're producing about seventy-five hundred teachers a year, we only need about twenty-five hundred, and they're often in the wrong area. So, but if you remember, the first time, at least I'll speak to my own part in this, that I spoke to this maybe five years ago, I remember, but Cassandra couldn't control this just 'cause she was working there, but a Wayne State person was very clear on the front page of the Free Press that, "Well, you know, we got a superintendent who thinks we, a person who loves poetry should become a math teacher." Well, no, I don't, I'm just, we'd just have to get some help in your incentives to get math teachers, 'cause that's where the need is, and not keep producing elementary teachers with the hopes that kids are gonna get jobs when there are no jobs, or at least specifically then, there were not. And so, one thinking was that, that you'd automatically have it, they wouldn't have to pay then for a test later, because they've already reached a bar on the ACT, which would, which would indicate more than basic, frankly. But then we would reorder a new test, in effect, with cut scores, depending on how you look at it. But in effect, look at a whole new way to think about your second chance would be beyond the ACT, would be, let's say, your sophomore year, you're ready to go into the program at State, your junior and senior year, and, and then we would have a test that would kind of be aligned with, here's what part of our problem was, we didn't wanna preach for K-12 students that you gotta be college and career-ready, but the Basic Skills test really doesn't show college and career-ready for even the teachers. So it was a misalignment that we just, with no malice, didn't fully connect the dots. So one way would be the twenty-four, and that would kind of, you know, you know, that would kind of... When you say you're in, you're in what? You're eligible to be, um, admitted into a program. Um, there's, there, 'cause remember, there's one getting in, and then there's the content tests getting out, and someday, we hope to be able to figure out the pedagogical side of this too, which we really don't now. This is through, when I was a local SUF, we added interview, we added, uh, lesson plans, in effect, that teachers would have to present to a committee, because you really had no sense, and really through no fault of the TPI, you had no sense, yeah, you may have, you may have met the bar on content, but no way of knowing really how they might be before kids in terms of their teaching practice. And that's still a struggle, but put that aside for a minute, the content area is, is one area we're looking to rework, but for now, what we're thinking of is at least kind of this entry level, that it would be a twenty-four or something that we wouldn't call a basic test. We have to give it a more, I don't know, Sally, if you guys had kinda thought about...
We've talked a little bit about maybe a professional readiness test, but somehow get the word professional in there, so it really addresses that. In order to get into a teacher prep program, you have to show some level of, on your, on track to that professional career.
Yeah, and I, and I think the, the beauty of the two-tiered, that you could either, in theory, junior year and high school, show yourself ready with a twenty-four, or for people like me, maybe late bloomers beyond what they should've been at any point in time by your sophomore year in college, you've been able to establish that you're, you're ready, you're professionally ready to enter a program. I think you also get it what John was inferring, and you brought up at other earlier meetings, which is, the last thing you need is, is someone that, late in the game realizes this, this, they're, it's not for them, they're not up to it, and yet to not take that opportunity away, 'cause it might take a few years of college for some kids to realize that not only this is what I wanna do, geez, I was not where I should've been by junior year, so I didn't, I didn't hit the twenty-four, but I have a way to hit an equivalent of that with a test that, uh, that we would have at that point. Please add and shape that out a little bit, if you'd like, Sally, or John, or Steve.
Well, it just, it changes. The current practice right now is that the Basic Skills test is required for them, for, for student teachers to take before they go into their student teaching. And then they have to take the content, the, the, the content test before they're recommended. So what we're talking about is moving both of those further upstream, as Mike was saying. And in addition, as we, as we rename it, we change the, the rigor of the test as well as the cut score. So we really do use that as an admission into the program.
I mean, I think this is a step, and it's only one, but in trying to get it, I think one of the major board goals of the year is that we keep moving the ball on, on improving, um, opportunities for people who wanna be teachers. And this is why we, we kinda debated over a couple of meetings, actually, to give the second chance, 'cause at first, you're thinking, well, shouldn't it be twenty, you know, do you even have them retake an ACT when they're sophomores? Well, that could be insulting in one sense also, sitting in a room with a bunch of juniors in high school to take an ACT. So that's when we realized, you still need to have kind of a professional readiness test. You save teachers, we think it would be, the majority of teachers now wouldn't have to take that test, because they would've been able to demonstrate that they had, I mean, June probably had a, you know, the highest score you could possibly get. Yeah, right? You got above the highest you could get.
I'm already remembering, so...
Yeah. But I, I think it's, so that was, that was our thinking about that so far, in trying to shape some of this. Sound right direction in general? I mean, at least one piece of this? Any, any? Okay. Good for today? More to come? Thanks, guys. And they work very hard on this, I mean, they do a really...
They are, they are.
And now we're gonna move, Mary Ann, if you'd join us at the table with Carol and Marla? She probably doesn't want me to do this yet, but since she told the crew, I'm gonna turn her in here, 'cause I don't know if she's not gonna just sneak out in the middle of the night, but Mary Ann has announced her retirement.
You're talking to me.
Oh, not you, sorry.
(laughing).
Yeah, no, right, right, no, I'm, I'm not gonna be naming retiring board members. Um, Mary Ann Chartran, that is, and we'll, we'll miss her, she's just done a great job here, as you know, and, uh, and, uh, in case this is her last hurrah, because I think it's gonna be in April, if I'm not mistaken, so in case you're not on for either the March or, or April meeting, I'd like to just ask you to join and give him a hand to Mary Ann for the kind of work... (applause). Has a, has a big division, a lot of responsibilities, that don't tend to come to light as often here, just 'cause of the nature of our work at the board table, but, um, you'll see a little bit of this today with the presentation on child and adult nutrition programs. And I, I'll just turn it over to Carol first with that.
Thank you, and I, and I really would like to echo Mike's comments about Mary Ann, and really appreciate your, um, round of applause for her, she's gonna leave a huge hole in this department, so you really can't go until all your work is done. Um, and, and to exemplify that, nearly a half a billion dollars in funding comes to Michigan annually to support child and adult nutrition programs that we manage in Mary Ann's area. Um, they are done on a reimbursement basis, for the most part, although some are competitive grants. We do provide a, a wide range of programs that provide food to children from birth through school, as well as low-income adults and senior citizens. Our team in the Office of Grants Coordination and School Support, where all of the programs that provide supportive services are housed, is efficient and effective in making sure that children are fed first and foremost, no matter whether they're in or out of school. In addition, the state board has adopted many policies in support of healthy nutrition, as well as physical activity. Most recently, the Michigan Nutrition Standards, where you made recommendations for all food and beverages that are available in schools. As Mike said, the presentation today will give a brief snapshot of over a dozen programs that are managed in the Office of Grants Coordination and School Support, there's about a hundred staff members there. Most of those staff members touch these programs regularly, fifty actually manage, monitor, and promote them. So I'd like to introduce formally, Mary Ann Chartran, the Director of the Office of Grants Coordination and School Support, and Marla Moss, the Assistant Director of Child Nutrition Programs.
Thank you. Um, let's see, do I have to do anything here to make this work? Hello? Oh, this one's better. Okay, thank you. Um, we'll have another chance, I think, to, to say goodbyes and that sort of thing. So we will get on with this right now. Thanks for allowing us to present, uh, information to you on the child and adult nutrition programs. These are the many programs that serve adults and children in the state. The majority of the nutrition programs that are supported with federal, are, are supported with federal funds through the Department of Agriculture. They come to us in one of three ways, through school entitlement programs, through competitive grant programs, or through the allocation of USDA commodity foods or funds. Michigan Legislature also appropriates some additional funding to support two of these programs. Our largest program is the National School Lunch Program, or NSLP. The NSLP is a federally assisted meal program operating in public and private nonprofit schools. Federal regulations refer to each one of these as a school food authority, or an SFA. In Michigan, there are over nine hundred SFAs participating in the, the programs, and these, the NSLP is made up of several pieces, including breakfast, lunch, and after-school snack programs. The School Lunch Program provides nutritionally balanced, low-cost, free or lunches to children each school day. Decisions about what specific foods are served and how they are prepared are all made by the local SFAs, but they must be comprised of the right balance of protein, milk, grains, fruits, and vegetables. SFAs offer paid meals, reduced-price meals, free meals, and the category of the meals is based on certain criteria. For instance, free meals are available to children who are foster children, runaways, migrant, homeless, and those in low-income houses. We post a fact sheet for many of our programs on the website, and I believe you were given copies of many of the, and these cover several years of, uh, information about a lot of aspects of the program. Here's an example of some for you. In two thousand nine and ten, over a hundred and forty-four million lunches were served in Michigan during, uh, the next year, a hundred and forty-one million were served. There was an average daily participation rate in lunch program of over eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand in two thousand nine, ten, and an average, uh, that went up in two thousand eleven, at a time when overall student population decreased.
Mary Ann, do you know why one went up and one went down? It didn't, doesn't seem on the surface to be...
Well, on the surface, um, the one is a snapshot in time number, the October's a snapshot in time, it was just the one month where the average daily participation was. The other is throughout the whole year. So exactly why some will go up and some go down, I do not know, um, but it has to do with, uh, the time periods weren't the same for each set of data. Millions of dollars come to Michigan from federal sources in direct support of lunch. Because it is an entitlement program, our sponsors are paid for every creditable meal they serve. There is not an upper limit on participation nor on reimbursement. In Michigan, all districts operating K-12 programs are mandated by Michigan law to, to offer a national school lunch program in all buildings. State aid funds, therefore, provide some support to the buildings for this participation. There is no requirement for K-eight or for charter schools to participate, but many of them do. The total support of state and, and federal forces for the lunch program totaled over two-hundred-and-eighty million in each of the last two years. The School Breakfast Program operates in the same manner as the lunch. Public and private schools can participate, as long as they have some grade kindergarten through high school in the building. When breakfast is offered, meals are available for all students. The same students identified for free and the reduced meals are also eligible for free and reduced breakfast. The breakfast programs give the opportunity to have access to a healthy meal. One interesting part about the breakfast program is that it can be handled in creative ways. We can always serve breakfast in the class, in the cafeteria, but some buildings have decided to serve grab and go, get, grab and go programs, meaning that the students can come in, pick up a meal, and then consume it someplace else, in a commons area, a gathering space, or in a classroom. Three years ago, as an outgrowth of Superintendent Flanagan's Breakfast Challenge Program, many districts did begin a breakfast-in-a-classroom program. We, MDE, clarified for districts that the time students spend eating in the classroom can be counted towards a student's seat time if there's also some sort of instructional activity going on, and that instructional activity could be, uh, students doing seat work, or the teacher doing things such as taking attendance or making announcements. And because we were able to clarify this, a lot of other schools and buildings decided to start in on the program. So the number of breakfasts has, has increased greatly recently. In two thousand seven, eight...
Can I just say, Mary Ann, this is, you've heard Kathy say this quite often, and about how the other needs of kids aren't met often, and we wonder why they, they have, um, obstacles to learning, and, and this is one we can control. You know, we can't necessarily control the nurses and the healthcare, which would be ideal, but I think in this case, when you, it's, I must say, though, it's still, it still strikes me odd that everyone who's eligible, every district who's eligible is not in the Breakfast Challenge, because what you have are kids, by definition, who are poor and hungry, and they're not having access to breakfast. So I still think there should, we're gonna keep pushing, it's up to a much higher level with the challenge, and we, your team keeps on it. But I really can't understand why everyone wouldn't have it, especially now with the guidance that you clarified, uh, on the instructional time. I mean, I know this is self-evident, but all these other factors in the learning that we talk about all the time, and then sometimes we sit there and, and just try to look the other way, that they're hungry and we wonder why they're not learning. You know, I mean, seven years old, you're in school, you haven't had breakfast, and as we said earlier on another item, this is not the stereotype of, uh, urban districts, this is throughout our whole state. There's, there's, these, these districts are spread entirely through our home, home state, and all of them should have a breakfast program that are eligible.
Uh, in two thousand seven, eight, we served about thirty-nine million breakfasts, and you can see from this chart that we're up to fifty-six million now in the year, and that's an increase of over forty-four percent in that four-year period, which did include the, the Breakfast Challenge time. In conjunction with that Breakfast Challenge, though, we did hear from a lot of districts, uh, schoolteachers and principals, and they have credited the Breakfast Program for a lot of the things Mike just mentioned. They, they're saying there's higher attendance rates, um, lower level of children feeling ill in the morning, more focus on academics in the classroom once they've had this breakfast. And so as word spread about this, a lot of other districts have begun to offer programs in non-mandated breakfast buildings, or, um, just made arrangements so that more students would have an opportunity to eat. As with the Lunch Program, millions of dollars come to Michigan from federal sources in direct support of, of the program. And again, it's another one of the entitlement programs, meaning that whatever meals the sponsors serve that are credible meals, they will get reimbursement for them. The State Aid Act requires all districts to offer a breakfast program in buildings that have a free eligible and reduced student rate greater than twenty percent. State aid funds calculated on a formula basis are available to many of those districts to help support the program. Again, charter schools and private schools are not mandated to do that, but a lot of them do it anyway. Total support for breakfast from state and federal sources has totaled over eighty-six million dollars in the last couple of years. The Breakfast Program is a program that's been designated as an underutilized program. This means that in comparison to the number of eligible students for free meals, the percentage of students participating in breakfast is much smaller than the number participating in lunch, as you can see here. This, this is rather staggering, and it points to another, uh, kind of a part of what Mike was saying. Even though we've increased the number of free and reduced-priced breakfast, there is still a hundred percent differences, difference in the participation rates of those eating breakfast and those eating lunch, uh, in the course of a year. The Child and Adult Care Food Program, or CACFP, like the School Breakfast and Lunch Programs, is a federally funded entitlement food program. This program provides low-cost nutritious meals and snacks for children from birth through age twelve in care at daycare centers, Head Start programs, outside-school hour programs, and family group and daycare homes. The CACFP operates all twelve months of the year and provides reimbursement for meals served to children in over one thousand preschools and childcare centers in Michigan. Many schools and other community-based programs that offer enrichment activities for at-risk children and youth aged eighteen and under after the regular school day ends can provide free snacks and suppers through CACFP. Approximately two hundred programs serve over three million snacks and suppers each year in Michigan. A third type of program in the CACFP provides reimbursement for meals and snacks served to small groups of children receiving non-residential daycare in private homes. These are homes that are licensed, registered, or approved to provide family childcare. Some of the private homes provide care for relatives, such as a grandchild.
Some of the private homes provide care for relatives, such as a grandchild. Each of this type of provider is registered with the state and is called a relative care provider. Like the school meal programs, CACFP provides higher levels of reimbursement to low-income areas and to daycare providers and children most in need. The reimbursements make the cost of daycare more affordable for many low-income families. Over 6,800 family daycare homes participate in Michigan under the sponsorship of six family daycare home sponsors. At present, we have no adult daycare sponsors or providers in the program. However, we recently added staff with the intention of offering this program within the next fiscal year. In CACFP, a provider may operate from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and give care to many children who receive meals. As you can see from this slide, several million nutritious meals were served in Michigan last year through CACFP. The institutions and homes in Michigan that provided meals to children received $58 million in federal funds in each of the last two years. Food That's In When School Is Out. That's the catchphrase for our Summer Food Service Program. During the school year, many children receive free and reduced-priced breakfasts and lunches through the School Breakfast and National School Lunch Programs. But what happens when school lets out? Lack of nutrition during the summer months may set up a cycle for poor performance once school starts again. The Summer Food Service Program is designed to fill that nutrition gap and make sure children can get nutritious meals they need. Our summer program is growing fast. Last year, 252 sponsors offered meals at over 1,200 sites. Number of participants at one site on one day can range from less than a dozen to as many as 3,500 children. The program provided sponsors with over $7 million in federal funds for the 2.6 million meals they served to children in low-income areas last summer.
Michigan is one of three states selected to participate in the Community Eligibility Option, or CEO Pilot Program. The CEO is an alternative method qualifying students for free breakfast and lunch in areas of high poverty. Individual schools or entire districts with 40% or higher eligible students can participate in the program. For the first year of the pilot, Michigan has 85 districts, let me move it backwards, 85 districts, including 441 schools representing nearly 200,000 students, receiving a free lunch and breakfast on a daily basis. The key advantage to the CEO is the elimination of the stigma that has long accompanied the receipt of free meals. Because the program only began in September, our claim information is limited. However, early data shows an overall increase in participation in those particular schools in the CEO. There appears to be about a 6.4% increase in breakfast participation and a 9.3% increase in lunch participation when all the students are offered a free meal. Last year, MDE applied for, and was one of the five states selected by USDA to receive another pilot program, the Summer Electronic Benefit Transfer for Children, or SEBTC Program. The pilot's objective is to reduce the level of hunger in the summer for school-aged children, and to reduce the high demand on food banks and pantries during the summer. In the last summer, we partnered with Grand Rapids Public Schools and the Department of Community Health WIC program. We received over $1 million for implementation and for food benefits for the participating families. In that program, 2,500 students in Grand Rapids received a $60 card that they could use for each of the three months, $60 a month, through a benefit card like a WIC card, and the families could purchase specific foods, limited to things that are nutrient-dense, such as fruits and vegetables, whole grains, low-fat milk. And they could purchase it at a local participating grocery store. Then we applied for another grant and received two more SEBTC grants. One will provide over $300,000 for full implementation in the Grand Rapids area this summer, where 5,000 students will be served. And a second grant, for almost a half a million, will allow the expansion of the program to provide food benefits to another 5,000 low-income students in six counties from Claire, up north, Claire East. In Michigan, there's much interest in finding local farmers to provide fresh fruits and vegetables for school meal programs in the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. In 2008, the Michigan Legislature passed a bill for the collaboration between the Michigan Departments of Agriculture and Education to encourage the purchase of local fruits and vegetables by school districts. The State Farm-to-School Committee meets regularly to discuss ways of linking farmers with schools. And surveys have shown a great increase in the amount of local produce purchased at by schools over the last few years. Since 2009, about a 41%, not an increase, 41% of the schools have reported using local produce for their programs. Team Nutrition Training Grants offer funding to state agencies for the implementation of Team Nutrition's goals of improving children's lifelong eating and physical habits, physical activity habits. The Michigan Department of Ed has received Team Nutrition grants annually since 1996. We are the only state in the nation to have received 16 consecutive Team Nutrition competitive grants. The grants provide training and technical assistance to food service personnel and to school staff to create healthier school environments. During the last three years, we targeted areas with these grants of school gardens, junior chef competition, training for food service staff, creation of nutrition standard toolkit, collection of applications for the U.S. Healthier School Challenge from the schools, and adoption of nutrition standards and support of the State Board of Education policy on these standards. The Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program began as a pilot in 25 school buildings. Michigan was one of the original four states in this program that is now offered nationwide. The Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program has been an important catalyst for a change in our efforts to combat childhood obesity by helping children learn more healthful eating habits and providing produce that they otherwise might not have an opportunity to sample. 190 buildings with at least 50% eligibility for free or reduced-priced meals received over $3 million for the purchase of fresh fruits and vegetables. The school is required to make fruits and vegetables available to students at times when school meal programs are not in operation, such as like a mid-morning snack. The Emergency Food Assistant Program, or TFAP, is a federal program that helps supplement the diets of low-income families by providing them with emergency food and nutrition assistance at no cost. TFAP foods are made available to households through nearly 3,000 agency sites and pantries across the state. A wide variety of nutritious USDA foods, such as frozen and canned fruits, meats, vegetables, and cereal, are offered to income-eligible households through TFAP. In fiscal year 11, Michigan provided over 28 million pounds of these foods with a market value of over $18 million to over a million citizens in Michigan. Though meant to be supplemental, the food package provided by the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, or CSFP, allows limited resources of many elderly people to be used to cover other costs, such as medication and home utilities. Michigan's 18 local community action and other agencies make the program available to 80 counties, serving 80,000 individuals each month. Food is distributed in a variety of ways, including pickups at the senior centers or home deliveries by volunteers. Typical free food package includes canned fruits, vegetables, fruits, juices, milks, pasta, cereal, milk, and cheese. In fiscal year 11, Michigan provided nearly 24 million pounds of these foods with a market value of over $18 million. Michigan has the largest caseload in the country, now serving 80,000 individuals a month. Focus Hope, based in Detroit, serves over 40,000 individuals each month. With the exception of California and Louisiana, Focus Hope's caseload all by itself is larger than any of the other 36 states or tribal organizations participating in the program. USDA foods are procured by USDA and made available at no cost. Schools are responsible for delivery and storage and processing charges. Schools receive an entitlement value of 22 and 1/4 cents per lunch that can be used towards the purchase of more than 180 different USDA purchased products. Schools can obtain raw products or divert their foods to a manufacturer for processing. For instance, a whole grain flour and low-fat cheese can be diverted to a company that can produce pizza, and then they will make it at a reduced cost because those USDA items were free, and they are part of the school's food entitlement. USDA foods make up about 20% of the food used in the school meal program. The value of the 45 million pounds of USDA foods received by Michigan last year equaled over $32 million. By properly utilizing available USDA foods, schools can reduce food costs and help their bottom line. MDE is involved in the new No Kids' Hunger Campaign. It is a public-private partnership modeled and originated by the Share Our Strength Group, a national not-for-profit foundation. It complements the Department of Community Health's effort to reduce and prevent childhood obesity by increasing the effectiveness of existing nutrition programs for children. Facilitated by state executive leadership, including Governor Rick Snyder, the Michigan No Kids' Hunger Initiative will bring together key stakeholders, such as the United Way of Southeast Michigan and other private, public, and nonprofit sectors to reduce childhood hunger and obesity. The last two slides provide you a variety of resources and websites and contacts you may find helpful if you want to check out some more information. And so that you can put some more names with faces, we may have a few folks come into our area from the office. Howard Leichert is not here. He's the one who is the manager of the School Meals Program. Kim Billick is here, and I think, yes, and is the Child and Adult Care Food Program Lead. Cheryl Schubel is manager of the Food Distribution and Fiscal Area. And Kyle Garand is the manager in the Coordinated School Health and Safety Programs. And although that office or unit doesn't manage the programs, they are highly involved in collaborative efforts when we talk about physical activity and nutrition with the staff there. So those folks, the vast majority of our 100 people do something with nutrition and physical activity. So it takes a lot of us to put this all together. So that concludes our program.
And two things, if I may, before we go to board, is, one is that, just so now that Greg's sitting here, we don't leave the feeling that this is state money, and we're, look at all these people we have. Out of the 100 people, how much, how many state folks are involved?
With state funds?
Yeah.
Maybe, point, I mean, maybe one.
Yeah.
I mean, but it's like ...
That's the right answer.
I'm a little, I'm a little bit, I'm about one.
That's the right answer.
And I forgot to do something. I told all the folks that are here.
If you're from my group, if you would stand up, I would at least have some more of you stand up.
This is nowhere near our big group, but this is a few of the folks that help with the program.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you. In fact, this is, it's rare that we're on this kind of item. Would you just, why don't we take another moment, just to stand up and introduce yourself briefly, if you would, please, and what work you do.
My name is Susan Friend, and I'm a new consultant to the CACFP program, and my charge is to get adult feeding programs participating in the CACFP.
Thank you.
My name is Kristy Garcia. I'm also a consultant with the Child and Adult Care Food Program.
Kim Billick, the supervisor of CACFP, already been introduced.
Nick Truzell, under Howard Leichert, School Nutrition Programs, and I work on Team Nutrition, and Summer Electronic Benefit Transfer for Children, and Outreach and Training.
Kyle Garand, obviously, the system doesn't want me to talk, so.
Melanie.
Okay. I'm just going to speak really loud, if that's okay. Melanie Brumler, and I am under School Nutrition.
Yeah, just talk, you know.
School Nutrition, I'm the compliance manager, so I handle all the monitoring for the School Nutrition Programs and the Summer Food Service Programs.
I'm a child girl, I'm a child, I'm a reality, I'm one of the realists of School Nutrition Programs.
I'm a special board, are you ready?
I'm just thinking, I'm a secretary, I don't remember.
I'm an assistant, and I'm a senior.
I'm a secretary, I'm a children's education director.
I'm a secretary, I'm a children's education director.
Mike, I'd also just like to point out, many of Mary Ann's staff are registered dieticians. Do you know offhand how many are?
Well, I think we have 10, 10 registered dieticians among the group. And several of them, several of the folks are now SNSs, that's the School Nutrition Specialist. You have to take a rather comprehensive test with the national organization, School Nutrition Association, and pass it to become certified or to get that credential. And we have several people who have completed that or are in the process of doing so.
Thank you very much. Nancy, I think you had firsthand up, and Kat?
I'd like to congratulate all of you on the wonderful work that you do. I have the pleasure of seeing firsthand the results of your school food program and your summer food program through the program that I work in. And I know that there are children that I work with, but for the School Nutrition Program, they would not be able to do the work that's needed to be done to be successful in their academic and their social careers. So I want to commend you on that. I was interested, however, on page 26, you wouldn't want me, Mary Ann, to, you know, just let that go without saying something, would you? There was a bullet that said, "Over 180 products available." If there is any nemesis that I find in this program, it is that piece right there, that just because it's available unfortunately does not mean all of our schools are choosing wisely. And when I've asked myself about some of the offerings that our children have that are full of high starch and full of high caloric content without fresh fruits and vegetables, or without complete nutritional value in the meal, I too often get the response, "Well, we know kids aren't going to eat it anyway." And so if I can encourage you in your work to help those people understand that if that's all that's available to hungry children, trust me, they'll eat it. I've proved it. And I guess just about everybody in this room has proven that with their own children. So that is one thing that I would encourage you to endeavor even more in doing, because I know how valuable that can be. But again, I want to thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Kath, did you, and then John?
I too want to, oh, I don't know, maybe this is working now. I want to thank you too for the, all this, I've been on the School Health Committee for quite a while with Cassandra, and Richard is on it now too. And we've really seen the development of this program grow and improve the offerings. They may not all do it, but the schools that I've been in, they really are trying, and the kids are eating this. And they're making, they're getting better nutrition. It really is encouraging. So I commend you on this, and this very thorough, thorough report. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. John?
Likewise, Mary Ann and the whole team, it's fantastic to see everybody. And I know Michigan with board leadership superintendent, but really, your leadership has a well-earned reputation for being one of the more creative, innovative, and effective states in school health and nutrition, and I think it's because of the people that And there are programs here that I wasn't aware of, so it's important to know what we have to work with. But I want to ask Mary Ann, and we will miss your cheerful leadership of this whole federally-financed emporium of programs, so thank you for your cheerful stewardship of all this over the years.
Thank you.
What have been the big changes, besides what I gather to be a kind of burgeoning pickup in numbers, because there's a lot of need? What's been the big changes in this over the last couple of years in terms of this family of work?
Well, I think probably the new federal law is going to be directing a lot of changes, change some of the nutrition standards and just the way we are operating. So it's getting schools more interested in serving healthier meals, and our staff is working very hard putting a lot of things together right now. We do have schools that already have met or exceeded those standards, and I think in your packet this week, we gave you information about the Healthier U.S. Challenge. That's an ongoing program that USDA offers, and when schools are ready to, or are up for the challenge, they turn in paperwork, and they have to show the kinds of meals they serve and the physical activity they have and a lot of different things that all have to come together, and our staff works with them to get them to that level so that they can perform at the high level and they get one of three kinds of awards. There's a monetary award from USDA that comes with it, and so there are, there is a lot of talk in the districts about doing good things for kids, and our staff daily is providing counsel to them on how they can do things better. So I think it's just this big emphasis on health and nutrition, and just keep at it, and the kids will eat.
Dan?
Let me add my voice to the chorus of those singing your praises and bemoaning your departure. And in addition, just a quick question around the CACFP, maybe two quick questions. One is, so it sounds as though there's an effort afoot to increase the number of adults who, in Michigan, who are, well, to actually-
We can-
Right.
We have never participated in the adult part of that. Right.
I'm assuming that that's just food, metaphorically speaking, that we're leaving on the table. It's not, this is not a capped program, and we'd be taking food out of daycare centers to, this is all, would all be additional-
Right. It's another entitlement program, so if we feed them, we get paid for the district, or whoever does it.
And one other question, so meals for children through that program in over one thousand preschool programs and childcare centers in Michigan, how does that compare with, and so do we feel like, we've got a lot of data on a number of eligible folks taking advantage of the school lunch program. How does that, does those one thousand centers compare with the eligible centers to participate? Any idea?
We know. I don't know if we know that.
The daycare centers have to be licensed or registered, so those are the only ones that are approved, participate, so I don't know. Kim, do you know how many?
Yeah.
We could get it.
We could get that. But in addition, yeah, I guess we did put in how many family daycare homes are in there, and that's another sixty-eight hundred, just private homes that are in the program, and they reimburse for the children they feed to.
So we'll get that, that data, we'll get that info either before the end of the day if we have it, or we'll email it to the board.
Right.
Eileen, please.
I'm looking at this as a Mary Ann Shartren debrief, with all of that experience that you have, and we're going to be sorely missing you. But the last thing I would like to add is more of the same. What else, since this is, these are federal programs and the dollars are there, what other needs are there that are unmet in Michigan due to whatever, whether it's lack of staffing, or, you know, is there, is there food that we could get for people who need it that we're not currently accessing?
Probably the most would be in the school program and the CACFP, because that is unlimited, and you can see from the stats on the breakfast, only half of the students that eat lunch have breakfast for some reason. So it's a variety of things. Sometimes the schools don't want to put forth an effort. During the whole challenge, we had some very interesting stories from schools that started the program, and what they did to make it more useful or user-friendly to the kids. There was one superintendent up in the UP, all she did was move where the bus let the kids off in the morning, and instead of putting them off in the front door, she did it over here on the side, so they sort of had to walk through the cafeteria, and just by having to walk through the cafeteria, they picked up stuff and grabbed it and went to their room and ate it. Sometimes it's a big sell job for the custodians, and a lot of times it's a big sell job for the teachers, but I've been in several buildings that had breakfast programs, and they said, "Boy, that administration, they told us we had to do this, and we were so upset, and we were going to this and that and the other." And two weeks into the program, if they had come to tell us we had to lose it, we'd fight, because within two weeks they had figured out that this was serving kids, kids were doing things in the classrooms that they hadn't done before, they were attending, they weren't tardy as much, in just two weeks' time. So getting the word out that it works and being open-minded on how this can happen, and it can happen at elementary or at middle or high school, so that, you know, when you stop thinking how many kids we can feed and how many we are feeding, we're missing, we're missing kids there.
Eileen, please.
Could you put me on the list?
Yes.
I would just say that I'm willing to bet that most of the board members here would love to be on a hit list of school districts that you want to send us to to talk about this.
Yeah.
Wouldn't love to do that. We could arrange for that, I'm sure.
One more. Maybe what we could do is, I'm not sure if the word's a gap analysis, but kind of in the spirit of Dan's question and Eileen's, maybe we could, in each of these, try to get a sense, because it is a good question, you know, a thousand, but compared to what? And we have a better sense from what you showed on the breakfast, I mean, even after all the challenge, and I think it went from, what, twenty-five percent to fifty percent, roughly? So, I mean, we doubled it, should feel okay, but it's still haunting that, well, what's the problem with the other half? You know, as Dan said, you're leaving food on, not we, but the districts leaving food on the table. And sometimes, just let's think about that. There might be a way to just show for the major programs what the gap is per the thousand question and Dan's question and maybe some of these other areas. And then let's think about how to take Eileen up on the offer for any board member that would like to help promote this in the best sense. We'll have something back to you mid-month. We're good?
Mary Ann was-
Mary Ann, thank you for-
Thank you.
I'm still here.
The non-retiring Mary Ann.
I wanted to make sure that Mary Ann knew I was clapping in appreciation.
Duly noted. Thank you.
To say again, how much I appreciate all you're doing for children.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Kath and Paul?
I just want to say that the correlation, the interesting thing is the correlation between the school breakfast and the behavior in the classroom and the improvement in achievement. That's something that we should publicize somehow more than we have, I think, because some people question, "Why are the schools doing this?" And that's, that's why the kids are there, and they can be nourished, and they do better. So that's a good reason to do it.
Yeah. You know, in the spirit of that, and maybe to the point Eileen's trying to get at, how we can encourage it, I found myself at MASA Conference, first time I spoke there in a couple of years, and legitimately, people are concerned about resources, and, but I have to, I have to admit, I've also asked at the same time, that they're bringing up resources to me, do you do the breakfast program? And now that I think about it, you get about fifty percent. And it's not a matter of, it's just a matter of, I could genuinely see puzzlement in some eyes, like, "Well, what do you mean? I didn't know we had," and who knows where that responsibility is, but we've done a pretty good job, I think, of making it clear how to get the breakfast program, so. But what I'm getting at is I think there's a disconnect between direct money, which I get, why people want to get back to where we were on the, on the funding, but I also think that we need to acknowledge, when there is, in the spirit of what Kathy's saying, money there to put a program in place and you're not taking advantage of it, and it does contribute directly to learning, then we're unintentionally being a little hypocritical. So I think the more we can get folks to understand that there's multiple ways to help a kid learn, and this is one big one, and there's money, as you say, as Dan said, left on the table. Paul?
Yes, thank you for, this is very informative, and appreciate all your work here, putting this together. I think you sort of answered what my question was. I mean, when we look at the challenges to it, you can see the reimbursement amount, but obviously there's costs in terms of running the program correctly, when you take a look at that. I mean, because I would look at it and say, "Well, what is the challenge then?" And I think what Mike just alluded to is that there's money for the reimbursement piece, but then is there still a financial commitment by the school district to provide it? That's my question.
There shouldn't be. We have districts that I can tell you, one that's got a million-dollar fund balance in his food service account, and it's because of a lot of things. The more the participation, the more reimbursement, your cost ratio of how much it costs to serve a kid, and then doing the other creative things. We've established a food consortia in the state, there are three of them, and all the schools belong to one of the three, and that is for the purpose of getting their commodity foods. So everybody in the state belongs to one of these, and then they also have the opportunity to buy some commercial products that are bid on a big group basis. So there are opportunities, if they want to take it, to cut their costs and be profitable. If they can't make a lot of profit, because we check that every year, it is a nonprofit school food service account, and they can't have more than a three-month balance on the books. But every year, we have to send notes out to several districts saying, "You reached that limit, please send us a letter and tell us how you're going to spend the money." And the money cannot go back into the general fund, it must go back into the program. So they have to buy refrigerators or stoves, or they have to pay their staff more, or they have to feed the children more fruits and veggies. I mean, they have to do something for the program, but they should be able to break even, and if they can't, they should be partnering with somebody who is, because a lot of them have figured out how to do that.
Good clarifying question and comment. Thank you. Are we good? Okay, how about, do we want to try for one fifteen? That'll give about forty minutes to eat, and come back, and we'll go right to public participation.